... questionable, if not illegal, procedures established by the Tennessee Code annotated in the collection, maintenance, distribution of public funds. Please do the right thing and distribute the library funds directly to the cities for our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. (applause) Allen Furber, please let the record show that Commissioner Holland was seated over the Gen. Item Number Six. Okay, thank you. Gen. Item Number Eight, recognition of Annabelle Lane for completion of Tennessee Certified County Finance Officer Program. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Annabelle's list tonight. She is our first county certified financial officer in the county. Her predecessor was a municipal officer, Mr. Beavers. Just a lot of us paced several years ago that said cities had to do this, but candidates had an option. So when Mr. Beavers decided she was going to retire, we got Annabelle signed up a twelve month course that was taken over in Nashville, and she has completed that course and graduated in flying colors. She was accepted by October Jackson Monk Fire. Just want to recognize her for her hard work, getting a certificate and being certified financial officer.
I think she needs to stand up. Gen. Item Number Nine, budget amendments, Marion County Local Government.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chairman over here is not that bad as it would, okay? First, you'll see a decrease in reserve in the mental health, transport reserve, six thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty cents. You'll see a decrease of forty-one hundred dollars in our fund balance, and that's the only new money in these budgets, forty-one hundred dollars. Then you'll see a decrease of any of the federal state funds, neighborhood grants, Sheriff's Department, thirteen thousand one seventy-six, federal grants, forty-four thousand six sixteen, period grant, which is through EMA, Big Lamb's office. And then the oil point seven with two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, and this is where we distributed out to oil point seven to our governor this year. The next big long list of numbers are where we're moving monies within the budget to cover some payroll shortfalls, to improve payroll, to cover some shortfalls in miles, which were a hundred and twenty-five dollars on social security, election workers, a hundred dollars, data processing. This will remove money to cover some costs that are on the next page. So total money that's been moved is four hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Next page, you'll see the sheriff's department charges, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand six oh five, that's for a David Hook Grant, an oil point grant, yes, go through the sheriff's department. There's forty-four thousand for self-defense, and then you see those other small ones come down to where it says circuit court, jury expenses. That's where it's at, forty-one hundred dollars. We had a jury trial here a few weeks ago, not having enough money to cover it, it was a question of juries, so they put them up in a hotel and paid them three or four days there. You come on down, there are fifty thousand dollars under budget on sheriff deputies, then sheriff overtime was twenty-six thousand dollars over, and jail overtime was twenty-six thousand dollars, and jail salaries were sixteen thousand dollars over. So that comes to the total far, thirty-four thousand one forty-six. So like I said, this is not new money. That's taking something out of one line item, moving to another line item. Being its payroll, it has to be approved with the county commission. Next, solid waste, a decrease of fifty hundred dollars in the fund balance. Hundred fifty expenditures, a hundred fifty of that is in overtime. Total solid waste is sixteen fifty. The next one, increase in expenditures, a hundred fifty dollars for improved payroll, and then trustees' commission, fifteen hundred dollars, that comes out of solid waste. That was an issue we had to run up on life insurance. Next page, drug control, decrease in expenditures of nine one hundred dollars. That goes to a hundred dollars, that goes to improved payroll to bookkeeper, nine one hundred dollars, dangerous drug grant overtime. Total nine one hundred dollars there. Your debt service, twenty-two hundred dollars, decrease of fund balance, two hundred dollars as paying charges for bonus, and then two thousand dollars in trustees' commission, bonus bonds, excuse me. Then education debt service, decrease of six thousand dollars. Six thousand dollars that goes into trustees' commission, another capital projects of thirty-two hundred dollars, two dollars is some engine drink cost on water lines. That is all the budget. Again, only forty-one hundred dollars, new money. Everything else, move this stuff around inside these different budgets. When it's payroll reflected, it has to be approved by the county commission.
Entertain the motion.
So.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. President.
So, Mayor Jackson, a couple of findings we've had over the years on these line items. We're now at the end of fiscal year. We won't have any issues now because we've changed what we needed to before that year. Like, there's any, even if I won't from that.
I'll tell you about something else before we get to those.
Good, good, thank you.
Entertain the motion to approve.
Go, Ford.
Second. Commissioner Blansett, motion. Mr. Atkins is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gen. Item Number Ten, Marion County Board of Education. Dr. Rivers.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If you'll look at number one, you all have before you, basically, this is the Innovative School Models Grant from the state. We're actually just making adjustments to that grant in contracted services, other supplies of software. And number two is just adjusting the budget to reclassify salaries in the events of the correct account. And I would respectfully ask passage, this does not affect the maintenance there.
Question.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes. The other charges source six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Is that a number of different items all together?
Without looking at that specifically, I can, this is a, like I said, it's a grant approved by the state. I can pull that out if you can come by the office.
No, I just.
I'd be glad to show it to you, but it's approved. It can be, there could be several different things in there. This is just things that we're doing, money from the state that we're putting into the classroom.
Okay, but it goes to different areas.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No, not just one item.
Okay.
Entertaining motion to approve. Mr. Abbott is second by Mr. Rollins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, number two is just for information, I don't need that cash flow announcement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Rivers. Gen. Item Number Eleven, Marion County Highway Department. Mr. Pickett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll look in your bag there, we've got eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Two thousand, that's coming out of the fund balance to pay for overtime, rain and storms every day, and we go out every night to get trees, things like it. The others, just in the highlights, six thousand ninety-two, they'll move over to bonus payments, the temporary personnel, thirty-two hundred, go over heavy equipment. The two thousand, the only thing in the fund balance is reduced by, it's two grand, and that lets me get to the end of the year, so.
Entertaining motion to approve.
Motion.
Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Pickett.
Thank you.
Gen. Item Number Twelve, set property tax rate. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no tax, property tax increase this year. The insider rate, which is the special different school district in our neutral city, is a dollar fifty-nine, four-eight. And the reason it's a little less is because they're not paying the real debt service. And the outside rate is a dollar seventy-six, oh-three, same as it was last year.
Always good news. Entertaining motion to approve.
Motion.
Mr. Franklin, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gen. Item Number Thirteen, approve Marion County budget, fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. I'll get the highlights of it. This year's total budget expenditures is seventeen million, forty-nine dollars, nine hundred, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Yet we spend everything that's been budgeted, which we will not, we never have in the past. We still have a fund balance of nine million, seven hundred and seventeen, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, in the tax increase. The assessed value of the penny is a hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Two thousand fourteen, the assessed penny value is sixty-seven thousand, so we've got good growth there in penny. We will lose about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding due to the ratio on property and utilities. And what that is, is tax assessor has my house appraised at two hundred thousand, and I sell it to David Abbott for six hundred thousand. So the state says you lose that money. Probably sell it more once, six. So, and then utilities, there's some change in it, too.
I'd like to know if I can get Ms. Green Abbott to buy my house. (laughter)
I'll just move in with you.
I reject that, Commissioner. I'll take you toward the free. So just give you some, what's in the budget. There's really not a lot of new stuff in the budget. Each office holder will receive a lump sum to give their employees a raise. That lump sum is three percent of their total salaries for each office, and be of them to disperse it. There is ninety-eight thousand dollars for three new patrol cars for the sheriff's department, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for new technology in the three courtrooms at the Justice Center, twenty-eight thousand for new software in the building and planning office. Health insurance went up seven point seven percent, starting in January. Now, that does not affect the raises, because we pay the health insurance for employees, so it does not affect what the employees get in the race. Also, our insurance, as far as workers comp, building content, my building vehicles, will increase about a hundred thousand dollars. So that's what's in our budget, the school budget. Their budget this year is fifty-five million, two ninety-three, oh-seven, oh-seventy-nine. They spend everything. They will have a nine million, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollar budget. Two thousand fourteen, when I first came in the office, had about nine hundred thousand dollar fund balance, and growth has had their fund balance as well. And that's the reason you get the cash flow reports you're getting now, the comptroller's office made them start giving you a cash flow report because of the low fund balance they had back at that time. In their central cafeteria budget, which is food services, that budget is five million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. If they were to spend all they have budgeted, they would have two million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollar fund balance. The Marion County Highway Department, their budget's four million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars. If they were to spend all they have in their budget, they would have a fund balance of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. So that's overall on the budget, high points on the budget.
Entertaining motion to approve.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So all of the, all of your county wide offices, you've approved all the budgets now? That comes in, that comes in from regulations for the finance committee. All right, thank you.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Franklin, motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cantrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Brandt. We'll go ahead and do real call on. Yes is to approve. That's reasonable.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Blansett?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Morrison? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Mr. Franklin.
What I've asked is that we make the budget more transparent so the public can understand exactly what's being spent. Not a negative thing in reference to the mayor or the office holders, I just think there needs to be more explanation so it's not so difficult to understand. If someone was to ask a question about how an item or how monies will be in spent, they should be able to understand that. I did go to the state to ask whether or not this format, it's a recommended format, it's not mandated, and this body has the ability to require additional line items so that we can make it a little easier for the average person to understand every, everything on it. So that's the reason for me now. Thank you, Mr. Brandt.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
One more resolution concerning the budget. We have a list of nonprofit fund this year. Partnership between offices being developed, fifty thousand, rescue squad, Marion County Rescue Squad, twenty-three thousand, Desert Department of Alcoholics, two thousand, fire prevention control, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine fifteen, health department, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, libraries, three hundred thousand, one hundred dollars, American Legion, Squeaky Honor Guard, thirty-five hundred dollars each, Marion County Monumental Museum, the Jasper Historical Museum, the Southeast Bay History Museum, fifteen hundred dollars each, ag extension service, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five forty, Marion County Veteran Memorial, thirty-five hundred dollars, GFW, thirty-five hundred, Mark, three thousand, Casa Crote, five thousand, Marion County Food Bank, seventy-five hundred dollars, and Isaiah House, twenty-five hundred dollars for a million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand people.
Questions? Entertaining motion to approve.
Motion.
Commissioner Cantrell, second by Commissioner Rollins. All in favor?
Aye.
Gen. Item Number Fourteen, change order number two, jail expansion. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I did a change order a month before last because of the water line, the fire suppression. It was in the way, and with the dig of that line up to move it, there's a second six inch water main that, wherever it runs this way, then it peaks back, comes back the other way, then they're about through the park. So we have a change order to also move that line to peak four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seventy-seven, five thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and only cents to move that line, so we can get out and on these buildings.
Questions? Entertaining motion? Mr. Campbell, second by Commissioner Rollins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gen. Item Number Fifteen, purchase of MCCI software for county building inspector and planning office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Their current software system was built by local individuals probably thirty years ago. Come October, we'll not have any more Microsoft support, so they can use software, MCCI, the building inspector, and Dave Gergen, and the late Mr. Renee Works in the office there. This one they found is twenty-six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. It'll be a yearly score of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This will allow contractors to do building permits online, will also allow them to go and see when inspection been done, so they don't have to come into the office. So there've been a lot, lot of new things, just software on headwind, expat, building permits, stuff like that. Really don't have much choice but to move on with the new software system. Motion to approve that.
Commissioner Cantrell, motion to approve, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gen. Item Number Sixteen, approved bid for Apex R7 Spectrometer for Marion County Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir. Only have one bid. Detective Cam, Kim, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars, initiative payment to some of their workforce funds maybe soon.
Questions? Entertaining motion?
Motion.
Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner Rollins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gen. Item Number Seventeen, approved health services agreement with Southern Health Partners and Marion County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been with Southern Health now for several years. They've saved us a lot of money. Not been that long ago, we spent almost a million dollars in health costs at the jail. Their base annual fees in August first, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars and forty-four cents. Per day, greater than a hundred and thirty-five, get made to a dollar and forty-eight cents. You have an annual outside cost pool limit of sixty thousand dollars. Not had to really give that cost pool. I recommend this sheriff, he's happy with them, they've done a good job, so I think they just stay with him.
Questions? Entertaining motions?
So.
Mr. Atkins, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Gen. Item Number Eighteen, approved appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars for Marion County Highway Department for capital projects out of capital assets line item one eighty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that the finance committee has been recommending. We do this five hundred thousand dollars to have line one eighty-nine, it's not in the budget, so what we'll do, we'll do a budget, then in July, we'll do this five hundred thousand dollars to the highway department, so they can do the payment projects they need to do.
Questions?
Question, Frank. What did we give the, the road superintendent last year?
Seven.
Of the last year?
Four hundred thousand, you're full, Mr. Frank.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry.
Could we request a, his wish list on what he's going to try to do with this?
Sir, I'm sure he could provide that to you.
We're hitting all five districts with the money.
I'm sure if you get with him, it wouldn't be a problem to provide that to you. Mr. Pickett, am I correct on that?
Sure.
Motion to approve.
So.
Commissioner Abbott?
Second.
Mr. Campbell?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gen. Item Number Nineteen, approved appropriation of proceeds from sale of old Chinook State property for one point two million dollars to capital projects line item one seventy-seven. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Line one seventy-seven is where we put our lease payments that Chinook State pays us. So I'd like to put that money there to do our next project there, once we complete this build out now, do our next building, now, or something.
That is a different project number, correct?
I'm sorry.
That's a different project number, correct?
Yes.
Yes. What is it? Do you have that number? What, what project number that is? It's not one seventy. Is it one?
One seventy-seven.
It is one seventy-seven.
Yes, yes, it's a line item, yes.
It says capital projects, and should be education.
Yeah, well, yeah, the one seventy-seven, yes, yes, education, you're fair, yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gen. Item Number Twenty, approved contract with Southeast Tennessee Development District on local planning advisory services. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We contract with Southeast Development District to plan the local planning advisory services. This is a yearly contract, fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. I think we'll be approved.
Motion.
I have a question on the two-year contract.
Entertaining motion, I'm sorry. Commissioner Blansett, second.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, sir.
This organization, are you on board of it?
Yes, sir.
With the vice chair?
Yes, sir.
You're also the chairman of the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Are there conflicted interests?
Yes, sir.
The state law, county mayors, and Southeast Tennessee have to serve on the executive board of the Southeast Development District as well as Sethra. It's like we had a head start, several boards you have to serve on becomes a job.
Motion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Atkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Blansett?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Gen. Item Number Twenty-one, Aaron Sanders and Gary Malone, I forgot it, mispronounced it.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Sanders. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to talk tonight about, a little bit about the situation of the water on South Pittsburgh Mountain. I would like to hear some current information from the county commission and Mayor Jackson regarding the unreasonable delays for completing the water project up on South Pittsburgh Mountain. We were told years ago that grants and permits have been secured to finish out the areas of the county that did not have access to county water, and it seems that all the other projects have been completed except South Pittsburgh Mountain. When I moved to South Pittsburgh Mountain thirteen years ago, there were three filling stations on the mountain where residents that did not have county water could go fill their tanks up for their water supply. And now, to the best of my knowledge, there's just one at South Pittsburgh Mountain Road and Old Mountain Road, and there are a lot more residents up there in the past thirteen years that use that one filling station. People have to come out in all kinds of weather to fill their tanks just to have water at their house. And, and my way of thinking, there's no excuse for this still being an issue. Not only is it a huge inconvenience for the residents, it's also a fire safety hazard since that no water means no fire hydrants in that area. I'm a firefighter on South Pittsburgh Mountain Fire Department, and if we have a structure fire or a vehicle or a wildfire in that area, we have to shovel back a water truck and a tanker from a hydrant that may be miles away. And as you know, that delays time real bad. In a letter dated on February twenty-first of 2024 from TDOT, it lists several instances of the Marion County Natural Gas and Board of Waterworks and/or their contractors' failure to follow specific instructions for water line installation at Bale Creek. And I have a copy of that letter here. The letter listed several areas where the water line was not installed in compliance with TDOT standards, and also the plans that the county committed, submitted to TDOT. As a result, TDOT claims the water line damaged their properties such as yard rails, and as a consequence of this... And as a consequence of this inability to follow T-DOT regulations and the county's own plan, in a letter from Andrew Miller, the T-DOT engineer for region two, the permit for South Pittsburgh Mountain was rescinded. Uh, this initial letter from T-DOT is seventeen months old. And I would like to note if the violations have been resolved and if the permit has been reinstated for South Pittsburgh Mountain. Also, part of the SPM project included a new water tower to be located in the same area as exists, as the existing one to compensate for the added consumption of new hookups. And the old water tower is in bad disrepair. Uh, I'd like to ask if any of y'all been by the water tower up on South Pittsburgh Mountain? It's, it's badly rusted and all the welded seams, uh, look like they could fail at any time. I mean, I think it's just a disaster waiting to happen. And if it does spring a big leak, then the whole mountain will lose water. Uh, in a previous county commission meeting, Mayor Jackson claimed that he was going to meet with the director of T-DOT around the middle of June to discuss these issues. Uh, I would like to note from Mayor Jackson the results of that meeting. The residents are tired of hearing non-answers and half-truths from the commission and the mayor for the past several years. And I would like to get some truthful answers tonight. Uh, these residents up here pay county taxes just like everyone else and deserve some answers. Uh, Mayor Jackson, you, you seem to be the point person on this project. And would you mind to address some of these questions that I have brought up tonight?
First of all, the water tower was never part of this project. It's a six-inch water main around the long side one fifty-six. The Highway Two project, we did meet with Commissioner Edie Lee two weeks ago today. We have another meeting scheduled for July the fourth, fourteenth. Uh, to start on, uh, plans that our engineers provided them, using dirt instead of using riff raps to bench in. So once we get started on that, they'll reinstate that permit. Talked about then, uh, you know, fire hydrants. We put three fire hydrants on this new line. T-Dex sent the plans back, tells they take the fire hydrants out because they're not enough for the fire. So the hydrants will not be on this project.
Well, with the new, uh, with the new tank that we're on?
They called to see the South Pittsburgh Marion Natural Gas, but I, I have no answer.
I'll answer that question for you. You probably know the answer to that already. Out of the country where you don't have a certain amount of pressure on a hydrant, it's not called, it's not stated as a fire hydrant, it's called a filling station.
It's, it's a low-flow hydrant.
So they could still put those in.
But can't do it as comfortably?
Well, I, I'm not talking about the money, you know about the money, but I'm just saying what you're telling him is not totally correct. They can still put the hydrants in, but they won't be, you won't be able to fire off them, you won't be able to fill a tank.
I understand that, I mean.
That's, that's the difference.
Yeah, T-Dex might just take the hydrant out, so they will not put the plants.
Because you didn't have enough pressure.
Right, so the hydrant's not being used.
Because you have them on your plant, probably as a fire hydrant.
Well, they tried.
You put them on there.
The engineer, the engineer did. The engineer did put them right, they were filling stations, not the fire hydrant, he doesn't have the plug. I've never heard of it. T-Dex still may have taken them off. T-Dex, T-Dex has used them lately.
He had named the person to talk to T-Dex, I won't talk to him.
I'm not talking to the engineer, so.
He missed naming the engineer to talk to the person.
I, I have the engineer's, uh, name here, sir. Uh, it's Andrew Miller.
No, he works for T-DOT. Engineer David Valles Dan.
Okay.
I don't see any reason they would not allow you to put a filling station in to fill a tank or buy, buy a fire.
There'll be a spigot there or something where people can hit order.
It's a fire hydrant, but it just don't have enough pressure.
So it can't be certified.
Can't hook to and fire off, but you have to put, use the filling tank.
That's what's the residents out there, the higher risk of, of, you know, fire danger with no protection.
You don't get a class ten anyway.
Our ISO ratings.
Fire insurance rating.
Our ISO rating is, but, but that hydrant's out there without flow with that.
Quick hold and heavy on that anyway.
But, uh.
But it had, it had a fire.
Right. But, uh, if I may ask, again, back to my original question, when, when are we going to expect some, some decent dirt moved up there?
Just, just as, well, we still have a, a giz, but we don't have yet. We gotta have, uh, like no that, and once that, uh, permit is restored, then we'll go out to bid.
Has T-DOT, uh, do they, have they lifted the rescind, uh?
No, sir, I just said that when, when, when we get that permit back, once we get this worked out on Highway Two, then they're going to reinstate the permit.
Okay, well, there's a lot of people up there that would really like to have water.
What exactly are we having to do on SR two in order to remedy the issue so we're not having permit problems?
To reestablish that bank. So they want a riff rap, but back down to basically use dirt and do benching. It's gonna be a lot cheaper actually. Probably costs the same thing using dirt that I use.
Are they needing a geotechnical study done and are they going to require?
They're gonna do that.
Are they gonna pull the water line that was put in?
No, the water line is safer, we installed a section of it in a different place. But we have to leave the line in our current retention, Captain.
So that part for SR two, are you gonna, is that something we have to approve monies, have a contractor go out and do that? And then, and what do you need from us?
Nothing, nothing around this moment, till we get, make the T-DOT again on fourteen.
Thank you for your time.
Gen. Isle number, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you did pronounce it correct, it's Gary Malone. And, uh, I guess I'll figure out how to follow that without being redundant because, uh, some of the questions have already been answered, I have, I have a few. But last month, I just wanted to reiterate that we were informed of good news that the, uh, South Pittsburgh water line project was ready for permitting, as you just expressed. But the bad news is that T-DOT had those issues, uh, with repairs that had to be performed due to the contractor doing whatever happened there, I don't know for sure. But most of this has already been kind of just talked about and answered, so I don't want to reiterate it. But the, now the violation's been corrected to their satisfaction to, to, uh, T-DOT right now?
I just got to say, we've gotten them making them on fourteen. Our engineer and our engineer to get this island worked out and what, what they want and what we, what we provided.
Great, okay. Now, the other question I kind of have, and it's just because of my background, I'm a retired building contractor. I've been in the business for over forty years and I've been off plans, applied for permits, dealt with numerous inspections on, as outlined in each and every contract that I've ever signed. Any change to that contract had to be amended by both parties. I find it unbelievable that a contractor would deviate from such an agreement without some sort of authorization to do so. Obviously, T-DOT did not authorize these changes. So my question is, who made the decision where the water lines were to be located in the first place?
Engineering company.
Cause I'll switch you.
That, that goes, that, that, that's a big problem. South Pittsburgh water line was already put in, give Justin Robbenett had went to T-DOT and got permits in place first instead of after bidding. And we met with him out on the mountain and his exact words, we don't do things like this in militancy. So evidently, their inspector in militancy did it from what they did here in East Tennessee.
Well, did the contractor act on his own behalf or was he given authorization to do what he did to deviate from the contract?
From, all he said, he put it five foot behind the guardrail where it's supposed to be. T-DOT says it's not allowed.
Well, there's, that's why they have plans and drawings that engineers submit.
That'd be pretty easy to find out, wouldn't it? I mean, you gotta set a plan, you gotta tape measure. On that, he put it in the wrong place, it ought to be the contractor. If it's designed wrong, it's got to be the engineer. One of them is responsible.
Correct.
Of course, you know what's, what's asked, it's who made the decision. And I think what I'm hearing is that this decision was made by the engineer where these lines were going to start with. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing? It was the engineer?
Somebody had to get a work order, put it where they put it.
And, and Mr. Malone's point, now who would have told the contractor to put these lines in on President's Day?
Nobody.
So you're saying he acted on his own behalf?
I didn't say that.
There you go.
In my opinion, yeah, in my opinion.
Well, I will just say this, our concern was that the extra cost to repair this water line was going to come out of, uh, and delete the funds that were needed for our project.
Your, this project's been going on, South Pittsburgh mine is gonna be done.
We watched it go down and down and down, Mr. Jackson.
It's gonna be done, Mr. Malone.
Yeah.
Not cut no fine, you're not gonna lose any funding to get that.
We're there for three years now. Asking the same question over and over again, where's our water, when can we expect it?
It's not like, it's not like you're funding, that's, that's not, that's the nani.
In three years of coming here, I cannot recall a single person from any of these other, uh, communities where these water line projects have gone in. We come here in person and we talk about having to haul water and, and to meet our needs, but we have never seen individuals from those communities, like Mullins Cove, come here expressing their, uh, problems of having to haul water and their need. We all need water, so we understand that. But we patiently have been waiting, watching while these other water lines have been installed in various areas that already have working wells. The Mullins Cove project not only serves a, a few homes and without any future expansion potential to my knowledge, but they were completed first, taking most of the grant money. And it just does not seem right. You don't see the need to feed the starving first. And in this case, citizens, taxpayers who are hauling water to survive. That should be an embarrassment to this county. With that said, we will be very thankful and appreciative when we finally see the water line starting at one fifty-six. Now, we were promised, what you, you talked about this earlier, it's called a blow-off. Blow-off stations, but the fire department uses their clean, or the waters, the, back up. The water, uh, the city water uses to clear out their lines. But sometimes the, uh, fire department will use those too for filling. But we were promised one of those in front of our subdivisions so we could access the water. What's the point in having a water line if you can't get to it? Unfortunately, there isn't room at the entrance to safely accommodate those trying to get to the water without obstructing traffic. And some of us use trailers and such. So to my understanding, the original permit for the Cumberland and Swannie subdivision was planned to have hydrants and water lines running through the whole subdivision. But obviously, that didn't happen since the developer didn't finish the work as permitted. So question, is it possible to bring the water line partway into the subdivision to a safe location that we can filter? Is that an option?
Be a question, uh, Mr. Garret?
Yes, they could do that.
Well, that's a great, great answer.
A couple of money, that, that's a question, who's gonna pay them to put the line in, put the blow-off where you need it?
One last question. This is obviously, we all enjoy needful water in our closets, so I think it was already a question, uh, asked a little earlier, but how soon do you believe funds could be made available to install the necessary water lines throughout the Cumberland Su, of Swannie subdivision, bringing water to our homes, just like what you all have, which is after all, the purpose of having city water lines in itself? Any ideas on that?
I've got it. What you, what you have is there's a state park, state forest up there and you got about, I don't know how many miles of pipe you gotta go through there. You have to pay for it, be just, nobody usually could tap to it, uh, since nobody will build a house there. So the cost of that, you have to pay that, you need a water bill to cover that cost. And you never have any, any money to help cover that cost, so that's the reason South Pittsburgh, you don't go round one from there all the way over to where you're talking about.
But over three billion could be spent on Mullins Cove to accommodate, how many people?
I didn't, we didn't pick those.
Yeah, you did, y'all voted.
We picked it, we picked the ones we want to, but there are houses that can be built along it as it grows.
Gotcha. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Malone, so we have a hundred, how many homes are up there right now that we're looking at servicing? Between, uh, Timber Ridge, Cumberland, Atswanian, and down toward it?
Uh, I guess sixty, seventy.
So, you know, trying to figure out the logic of who made the decision where these lines were going initially? That, I think that's a big question. I know in, uh, if, if we talk to the mayor of Jasper, uh, which I'd like to ask him, were you ever talked to about where these lines go, meaning that you're the utility manager? Did you have an opportunity to quick, give your input?
I would come to these things, no. No, we weren't, uh, but, but like I say, Mullins Cove and, and H. Carter, no, we didn't pick those. We didn't pick those, we didn't pick those locations. Uh, I can give you an update on Mullins Cove, we've adopted the first section of Mullins Cove and, uh, we've had folks come in and put their deposits down, we've done some one calls, we're looking to cut those up on Mullins Cove. So that would be an operating.
So now, since you were intrinsically involved with this project to a degree, even though you, you weren't the one that made the decision where it was going, did the engineer make the decision?
Um, not to my knowledge, no. I talked to her, I talked to her this week, she said, uh, our, the engineer that designed both those water line projects was a foreengineer, which is, we use them as a city and the county uses them also. And, uh, the engineer that designed those was actually leaving that company, going to another company. So we were helping those announce some projects and she, she did not make it. But to answer your question earlier, you're correct. The, the cap on the hydrant had to be painted a certain color for that low flow and it's a two and a half versus a four and a half, so you're correct.
Gen. Isle number twenty-two. Approval resolution authorized Marion County clerk to utilize title and registration fees.
I think, uh, I don't want to risk that. Over the, Commissioner's ministry, the, uh, uh, back in two thousand twenty-two, state, uh, passed a law that, that added a, uh, three dollars fee or it's part of an eight dollar fee, it's an overall fee, but there's three dollars of the fee for title and registration. It's done through the county clerk's office that is retained by law by the county clerk's office to provide services related to titling and registrations of, uh, vehicles. And those funds, unless they are released by approval of the county commission, uh, they are retained by the county clerk's office and restricted such that the county clerk cannot use those funds, uh, for any purpose. And they just continue to accumulate, they don't revert, um, to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year like many other fees do. So the resolution you have in front of you will allow our county clerk to utilize these funds to provide title and registration services, uh, for the benefit of the citizens and residents that are in use, uh, that office. And, uh, otherwise the funds are just going to continue to accumulate. And, and I can say it this way, but they basically serve a purpose because they, they've been accumulating since two thousand twenty-two and they have been used.
Well, what has accumulated so far?
A little over a hundred thousand, a hundred and five.
A hundred and five thousand now.
So, uh, am I understanding that this, this money, is it just in limbo or is it, uh, where the county clerk can't use it, aren't we supposed to take this money and be that we're a fee simple office, correct?
The, the county clerk's office is a, is a fee office and, um, the significance of that is that it operates on its own budget, budget line. It is not, uh, a general fund office like any of your other county offices are. So, uh, it has to survive off of its own revenues financially. So that, that's the difference. Uh, but, but the simple answer is, uh, no, if, if, if these funds remain as they are now, they will continue to accumulate. And they don't revert to the general fund at the end of any budget year, it'll just continue to build and build a bit. So.
But you, you check, it's just legal.
Yes, sir, I, I've conferred with the, uh, with the state, um, actually, the resolution you have in front of you has language in it. Um, that the, uh, C-TAS attorneys who do this particular service for the state said they needed to contain in order to be satisfactory to the office. um, that the C test attorneys, who do this particular service for the state, uh, said they needed to contain in order to be satisfactory to the office.
And, and as I understand it, and we talked about this briefly, with it being a fee simple office, we as a commission do not get an opportunity to look inside the budget and see what's going on. We don't see salaries, we don't see what's going on, how everyone's paid, what they're paid, bonuses, et cetera, et cetera. You get to see it in the budget.
You don't have, that's correct, you don't have the same, uh, access to the inner workings of that office's budget as you do the general fund office. Procedurally, the way it works, the fee offices present a budget request to the county mayor every year. County mayor, um, has the ability to agree to the funding request by a letter of agreement. If an agreement is not reached, then the recourse for the office holder is to go into the chamber and have the chancellor approve a budget.
Okay, so my next question is for the mayor. So I gather that without this resolution being put forward by the county clerk, you're unable to sanction our budget, is that correct?
I would not sign the motion.
Do you think it'd be more advantageous for our taxpayers and the commission to modify the county clerk's fee simple status rather than essentially applying a temporary fix and hoping for the best, betting with taxpayers' money?
I guess somebody looking to do it next year, both of them split, just to end the question.
Thank you.
So we need to get back to, back to him, right?
Yeah, it's a simple decision really, by, by the commission, whether you want to allow these funds to become unrestricted. Uh, to some extent, by statute, they are still restricted, they can only be used for services related to titling and registration. Uh, it can be salaries, wages, it can be equipment, supplies for the office, uh, travel for training for, uh, clerk and deputy clerks, uh, related to titling and registration, and there are, uh, functions yearly that, uh, they are able to attend with changes in law and procedures and that sort of thing, so.
But it's clerk's money.
Correct.
And no one else can access that except the clerk.
That's correct.
And she cannot do it forever, who cannot do it without the approval of the commission.
Yes, that's correct.
If I may also, that is so everyone understands, C test did state that she has a right to have this money and use it if we vote in that direction with the resolution, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, and many other, uh, counties in the state are, are doing that.
Okay. What other counties are doing that?
I've, I've got, that, uh, um, I'm going, does a commissioner have to present this resolution, or because it's presented, is it? I guess can, uh, can Joni present this resolution, or does a commissioner have to present?
Well, no, she can present it, she can, she, she's essentially requesting that you all approve her.
She has presented.
Correct. Okay, well, I make a motion to accept it.
I'll second. Officer, Mr. Franklin, second. All in favor? Oppose? Oppose, roll call please.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Morrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Rawlins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Gen 923, resolution, distribution of Marion County library funds, Commissioner Brandt. Uh, the, there's a resolution that's before you to, for approval.
Did we make the change to that resolution from the meeting, and?
I think Billy did.
I'll be glad to explain the resolution, I know there were, there were some commissioners who weren't able to attend workshops, so, uh, and, and a lot of the public wasn't present, so I'll be glad to explain what it does. Um, as you saw earlier in your budget approval tonight, the county has appropriated a total sum of three hundred thousand one hundred dollars for library services in the county. In years past, those funds have been, uh, paid to the county's library board and then distributed to the librarian, Mont Eagle, and the libraries in Jasper, South Pittsburgh, and Whitwell. Uh, town of Jasper decided during this fiscal year to, uh, establish its own municipal library board. And, uh, the city of South Pittsburgh voted at its June meeting, as Mr. Allison alluded to, uh, to start the process to withdraw from the Marion County Library Board and to establish its own municipal library board. And the city of Whitwell, I think, is, is able and may be considering action on this tonight. Um, so the change, Mr. Franklin answered the question that was made from the one that was distributed at the workshop, is the resolution now is designed to accommodate a situation where the city either stays in the county library board or withdraws from the county library. And what it essentially does is it takes the, uh, historic seventy-five hundred dollar appropriation to the Mont Eagle library, it takes that off the top, and then it divides the balance into three parts among the libraries in Jasper, and South Pittsburgh, and Whitwell. But, uh, Whitwell getting the extra penny, so it wasn't even a number, so. Um, and, and it authorizes that disbursement either to the county library board, uh, for South Pittsburgh and, and Whitwell, uh, if they are still members, and then directly to Jasper, or if South Pittsburgh and Whitwell follow through with withdrawing, then it allows the appropriation to be directed to those cities.
And that's the only thing, we're not, we're not talking about MOEs, we're, we're literally just saying that we're gonna divide money up equally.
Correct. You, you have an existing MOE, maintenance of effort agreement with the state that's in place until the end of October. And I conferred with Jamie Ritter, the state librarian, and his, uh, legal counsel last week on some procedural things. And, um, you know, their primary concern, of course, is that the funding not be reduced, and that's, that's not happening, at least not at the county level. Um, so how you all work out the distribution of those funds, um, you know, they're gonna leave that up to you all.
And even if Whitwell doesn't decide to stay in, then the library board will take care of Whitwell. Same amount of money as Jasper, as, uh, South Pittsburgh, and then the allotment that has already gone to Mont Eagle, it'll continue to stay the same.
That's correct.
Isn't that number ninety-seven thousand dollars something?
Ninety-seven thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars.
Each to each, each city.
Or excuse me, Whitwell gets one penny more.
Right, right. Do we need a motion on this, is that popular?
So how, let me ask, Mr. President, how does this impact the executive director position at the library board?
Well.
Because the library board does not go away, correct?
That's correct. If, if you all, if you all adopt this resolution, then you are essentially not funding the county library. There'd be, this would take all of your, uh, library appropriation for this coming fiscal year.
What if Whitwell stays in the library?
Well, then the, if they stay in the library board, then the one-third that's going to Whitwell would go to the county library board, um, for ultimate distribution too, for their benefit, because they'd be the only remaining library in that system.
And they would have the funds to cover this person if they wanted to keep that director?
I don't know if those funds would be sufficient, Mr. Franklin, I don't know what those numbers are.
Right.
I, I, I think last year they asked for, I think around fifty thousand dollars for a director. So that would be, Whitwell getting, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars of it.
Correct.
Fifty thousand would have to go to the director.
Doesn't really make a lot of sense, is why the library board would rush, knowing that South Pittsburgh and Jasper were both out of the, the system, or they're, they're, under their jurisdiction, and immediately go and hire an executive director? Why would you do that? About how I think it works. I'll say.
Mr. Blancy, second, uh, Commissioner Brandt. All in favor? Oppose?
Could you clarify about to the public what that motion did?
It divided the money up equally amongst the libraries.
I think, uh, lack of response, we'll go ahead and roll call both of this.
I just, I, I just was going to record as saying, we've gotten to October for the maintenance of effort is required. Point out the issue with getting in, the library board getting in a rush to point a chair, the same here with us. I, I still am uncomfortable with knowing what Whitwell's gonna decide on tonight, I would love to give, they're, they're facing a tax increase. You all know how, how difficult that is. That's weighing, you know, hard and heavy on them tonight, it's probably not a priority for them, which is the only reason during our workshop, I don't have a problem splitting the money equally, I would just like to get their input before we put them in a position, what if they can't afford to maintain the library after, after a tax increase?
In the event that happens, are we wanting to take money from South Pittsburgh and Jasper to make that shortfall?
No, no, I don't think anybody ever had mentioned that, that it's.
Because all this does is say that we're gonna divide it equally, that's what, that's what this is for.
What about oversight? What about oversight?
Well, even if the cities will have oversight.
Uh, in a previous meeting, I thought you would ask for someone at the county level to be involved in each of those boards, as far as oversight, you're okay with allowing the cities to oversee the funds?
Absolutely.
Through their audit process?
South Pittsburgh, or Jasper, or, or Whitwell for that matter, I think they're, they're smart people, they can do it.
They get audited like we get audited.
Sorry?
Each city gets an audit on the funds, they would get, those funds would be audited, and they would be audited here before the county gave the money to them. So it'd be audited twice that.
That's correct. I don't think that audit does, well, to make sure we send the money to the city.
It also looks at how they spend it.
Yeah.
Not ours.
Well, I'm just telling you, they do it to cities.
I only will look.
You come up, you're saying that they don't, you, you come up, you've got a hundred thousand dollars spent, you can't prove.
We, we, we do have three hundred and one thousand, or how we spend.
That's what audits for, mayor.
They'll audit, if we send it, they don't know audit how, the city's subject for that.
They'll audit to see, make sure the money's going where it's from.
Counselor?
Well, to clarify, I think what the mayor, I think you're all talking about two different things, the county's auditors.
We could be.
Will look at the county's expenditure of the funds, make sure it was spent for library purposes as the law will require. Then each individual city auditor will be responsible for ensuring that the funds received for library purposes were in fact spent.
I think that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Any other?
We have a motion in a second.
A motion in second. Do. Okay. Yeah, we're gonna do the roll call, because I got no wish.
I didn't have a no.
I didn't have a no, I didn't have a, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Satisfied, please.
Thank you.
Twenty-five, Gary, I'm sorry?
I'm really concerned if, if the library board going forward with hiring someone after knowing, knowing that both of these cities get through. It just seems like there's something more to this equation, and I'm concerned about the money that we are giving them. And I, I think it's something that, that we need to allow our, our ethics committee to investigate and understand what is going on. Because it doesn't make any rhyme or reason why you would do that. Why would you offer a job to an individual? And we just made this decision to do what we've done. They knew this, why?
That's a question for the library board.
Well, that's a question also for, I think women's understand this better. Uh, and I'll, I'll go down, I said, I'm deeply troubled by the recent actions of the library board. This rapid appointment of the new executive librarian raises significant questions, particularly considering the recent decision by both the Jasper and South Pittsburgh librarians, librarians to withdraw from the Marion County Library Board. Moreover, I attended the Marion County Library Board hearing regarding the dismissal of the South Pittsburgh librarian. During this hearing, the board's financial representative made statements suggesting potential payroll and accounting irregularities, as well as other serious issues that are defined in Title VIII, Chapter forty-four regarding public meetings. These concerns should be taken very seriously by this commission. I move that we refer this over to the Ethics Commission so that they can investigate what is going on. That's a motion. Got a motion?
My only question is, I guess it's toward Billy, does the Ethics Committee have any authority over the library board? Or out of the state Ethics Commission does, with the county.
The county, the county's Ethics Committee and its ethics policy, um, they, they apply to all, um, employees, officers, uh, committee members, so, yeah, simple as it is, if we were required.
I, I may be out in left field somewhere. If we distribute the money, we just voted to distribute the money, uh, ninety-seven thousand dollars to Jasper, and I said, to Pittsburgh, and I said, to Ashwin. So if we distribute this to the cities, technically, there is no library board, you know?
Well, the library board will continue to exist, the state has said it can't dissolve. But there won't be future funding. But they do have a, a, a fund balance now, I'm not sure what, what that amount is, but they do have funds.
I believe the fund balance is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And that's the county library board would have the right to audit any one of those libraries. It's county money that you're.
What do you mean, the library board would have?
Well, the, the library board is still functioning. Could add, could ask for an audit, and each one of those libraries, the county's money, to make sure that the county's money wasn't wasted.
Well, I think, I think the cities, the individual audits for each city, Mr. Blancy?
Well, they're gonna have to account for that anyway, Billy, they have to account for all the money in the budget.
Right. Yeah, I'd question whether the county library board would have the authority, legal authority, to audit a library that's not part of the county's library system. I don't think they would. If, if each of these three cities withdraw.
If they don't have it, then we would have the right to do it.
You can request an audit, I mean, that, that's what you're asking, you can request an independent audit.
They didn't want to audit it, if we thought something, something was done right, we could add it for money.
At your expense, yes.
So, so I'm, I'm taking, uh, the route, the hundreds, how much?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand, we have no control of, correct?
I won't go so far as to say you don't have any control, I mean, you made that appropriation, and so you, you have some oversight over the county library board to make sure the remaining funds are spent in accordance with the law, so.
So if there is, if there are not over any libraries, we can, can we request for that to be distributed to the three libraries?
You can request that, yes.
Yeah, we don't have the authority, once they have the money, they do it as they wish with it, and that's, I think that's the bigger problem, why we need to look into this matter. Uh, and then is there a possibility that, in the event that that money's gone, and let's say it's focused for whatever reason, that they decide to spend it on, can we withhold any of the revenues that, that basically the other libraries, in essence, have been cheated out of? Until it comes up with that amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
We're not getting any more of them.
So.
So, well, true, but under your, under your scenario then, you're conceiving that the county library board would appropriate all hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of the remaining funds to one library.
Correct.
And meaning the other two libraries in the county get zero of those dollars.
Well, out of the hundred and seventy-five thousand as it is right now, that's exactly what will happen, is it not?
Well, I, I don't have any idea what.
I mean, they're not, they're not in their system, so they're gonna spend it in one area.
It has to be spent for library purposes by state law, so they can't, can't do anything else with it. I don't, I don't represent the library board. They have their own council, as you saw, I guess you attended. They do nothing to see if we're gonna have a library board or not.
Yeah, probably.
I mean, we don't, technically, we don't know that.
Well, that's, that's the logic behind, my question earlier, is that we're in a hurry to get all these things and to get these decisions made. There's a lot of information out there that we don't know still.
Well, the thing is, guys, even if we voted this way to do it, like we were casted for, we always change. So it's not, it's not, it's gonna be that way always. Next month, if we find out we wanna, the library board wants to stay together, and all three libraries want to participate, then we can vote and change it.
These MOEs will come up every year to be longer.
Well, and, and to Commissioner Franklin's point, there are current MOEs that are in place for all three libraries. So, you know, I, I'm gonna speculate, I shouldn't do this, I guess, but I'm gonna speculate that, that there are commitments by, by the Marion County Library Board at this time for how their remaining funds are, are to be spent. So, to some extent, those are going to be controlled by their MOE agreements. Uh, so, I, I, I'd say give them some time to see what, what those MOE agreements are. I only have, I only have one, one MOE at the county. So, I don't, I don't know what the cities, you know, the other cities have done, what the libraries themselves have done. So, um, I think you need to give the library board a chance to do what the funds is, they think is right. And if you disagree with it, then you can address that at the time.
I think participating, not participating, but being in the audience and seeing the dialogue and hearing the dialogue in the meeting of the hearing for the librarian that was dismissed. When they're talking about problems with the, with people's pay, um, and not really having answers that you would honestly believe they should have as, as a board, uh, it's just very concerning. And that's why I, I just feel it's important that we do look into it. Now, obviously, if there's no findings, there's no foul, there's no problem. But we doing our due diligence, I believe, is important.
If we wait to see if they do a draft, then it's gone, we can't do anything better then.
Well, again, you know, there, there are some obligations that they're gonna have to make. I'm confident, I don't have those to understand. Do they have some surplus funds that aren't, are obligated under an MOE with the state? I don't know the answer to that. It's possible.
They meet next week? Is Pittsburgh meeting?
Oh, the city, the city's of Pittsburgh, they meet a week from tomorrow.
Yes, still have a motion.
Yeah.
If your commercial was to refer, library board to refer this over to the Ethics Commission, or commit, our own, our own Ethics Committee, I'll say.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Good. Good job, Rick.
Yeah, twenty-four, I believe is one, Commissioner Graham, requested. Yeah, that's requested by Commissioner Graham, sponsored by, uh, twenty-five. Gary Bonanti?
That's correct.
Ready?
Good evening, Mayor, Chairman, Commissioners. I, um, I live in Jasper Highlands, and I have some questions related to, um, roads, private roads and the subdivision. My question is, is the Marion County Road Supervisor, which is Pickett at this time, authorized by the state to sign off on plats related to private roads? Second part of that question is, are there soil and road compaction reports related to each phase of the development of the road construction? Possibly this is, Pickett can answer that?
Yes, Mr. Gallagher. Bonanti, I'll, I'll answer the first question. Um, the, the simple answer is in, in the opinion of the state, answer would be no. The county roads superintendent should not sign off on private roads, um, private road plats. And we recently amended our subdivision regulations to provide for that, give a process in place now. Uh, that, that old standard was prevalent in the state for a number of years, but the, uh, the Highway Commissioners Association has, um, gotten this state attorneys to give an opinion that there's an attorney general opinion basically that says can't, shouldn't do that. So we've changed that.
Mr. Gallagher, real quick, when, when did that law come into date?
Um, the, the law's, I guess, been on the books for a hundred years. Mr. Brandon's just a, a more recent interpretation. So, you know, our subdivision regulations respect private roads were done, um, they date back to the time when we used the state planning office for our, our planning services. Before that, the office was in a way. So, uh, it dates back at least to that time.
Maybe, Mr. Pickett, can you answer that? When was it changed? You're not to sign flats related to private roads.
The code?
Yes.
The code at the highway, excuse me, go by is, uh, January one, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Blasen told me not to be signed off.
Twenty thirteen. So that's.
I have a email from the director out here.
Okay, there was a, another question from Mr. Dan.
So the second part of that question is, are there soil and road compaction reports related to each phase of the Jasper Highland road construction? As we were, each phase is the developer was required to post a bond. So, in order for that bond to have been released, there has to be reports in somebody's possession. There seems not to be. Can that be clarified?
I would think there would be, Mr. Bonanti, that, that there should have been done. There were reports that were given, planning commission meetings by previous roads superintendent, unfortunately, he's no longer with us.
Well, that was, you know, that was done under prior administration. There is plats there that the prior roads superintendent signed and stuff in Jasper Highlands, but there's no, uh, I can't find any, actually, or anything like that. So, I don't know where, what, what he did with them, or if he has them, or that, that'd be something for him, you know?
On that, I'll put the answer to your next question.
Well, that, that being said, then, um, in Article Five of the regulations, Regulation five twenty-nine, it reads, "Private roads shall meet the following standards. Private roads in subdivisions shall be designed to meet the same standards as public roads. Variance process shall not be circumventing this requirement." Which basically says to me that you have to meet the requirement, and you're not gonna get any special permission to change it. Well, roads are falling apart. They don't not meet standards. Um, as you know, the roads are supposed to be twenty feet wide with three foot shoulders on each side. They are not. The soil, all material for the road cutaway shall be used in the construction field. Regulation five nineteen says, "The developer shall provide a job mixed formula to the highway superintendent to ensure the proper materials and standards will be used during construction." There's no paper trail. What are these reports ever doing? We're the one now paying the price for the county's lack of oversight. You are also, we were talking about water supply earlier. That's Article Six. It says, "The water supply system, the entire cost of installing the required water supply system, including the connection to existing water supply, including but not limited to the cost of pipes, valves, fittings, trenching, backfilling, and services, shall be borne by the subdivider." Where this goes on the same regulation six oh three, fire hydrants spaced a maximum of one thousand feet apart shall be installed whenever water lines are extended into a subdivision. It also says that the fire hydrants will be color coded. Well, as of last year, we were forty-eight fire hydrants short. Okay? It cost us now as taxpayers to pay for fire services, additional two hundred dollars a month, a year, rather, to buy a water tanker because we didn't have proper fire hydrants. Well, they were supposed to be put in and borne by the cost by the developer. How did that get by?
Yeah, I think the answer on your water situation is your, your water system was private.
Okay.
It, it's never been a public water system, to my knowledge.
But it does say the water supply system. Doesn't say private or public.
I don't, I don't think your subdivision was approved as, as a subdivision for private water.
Those are the benefits down there. We never approved that.
So, so how, why was it a stop order issue?
We didn't take it over. It was a private system. You can have a private water system instead of Tennessee.
Okay, so any, any private group system, any private development, the water company that goes in there doesn't, it doesn't have to follow this. But how is it in the regulation? I don't understand.
I, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Blasen.
They, they wrote their own regulation.
Oh, this is the county regulation.
I think the simple answer is that the original Jasper Highlands development was, was not approved with public water.
It stopped at the water tank, on the, water tank on the side of the mountain.
Like Kendall, that Kendall.
That Kendall.
That's where your public water system stopped. Okay. But it doesn't say you're public or private in this regulation. It says the developer.
It was, it was presented to and approved by the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken, that, that the subdivision would be done with, with private wells, not by, by water system. I think the developer decided to put the water system in on his own active path.
Okay. So getting back to the roads, since the roads weren't built to standards, how was the, um, bond released on each segment? The county released the bond.
Yeah, to release bonds, it requires the approval of the road superintendent. It requires a recommendation, uh, the affirmative statement to the planning commission, and the roads or the other bonded improvements have been installed, and of course with the regulations. And then, uh, there's a request for the bond being released, and that's the process that's followed. So, the previous administration, and I can't speak for what records are or are not in the highway department. Um, that's the process that they were supposed to follow.
I was in the Navy, a nuclear submarine, and everybody's responsible for the job. But there's always somebody overlooking to see to make sure they're doing their job. And apparently that didn't happen here. So, we're, we're holding the bag on this. We had a trailer just this weekend break an axle on a pile. Uh, and the developer's walking away. He thought it was pretty funny the last time we addressed the situation, to say that, well, what is it, chef at the top of the rock restaurant causing the damage to the roads? We're not children.
Chairman, can I ask you a quick question? What are we doing going forward so this type of stuff doesn't happen? I'm sure we've made multiple changes to the subdivision regulations to make sure we don't keep making the same errors over and over again. Is that a fair assumption? So which ones related, for instance, to water? If, if you're putting a water system in for a development, I have got to believe there's stringent regulations related to it.
There would be TDEC regulations.
Be TDEC.
Yes.
And would the NFPA, I would assume that their regulations would state how many fire hydrants have to be inside of, of a development, with or not.
Every thousand feet, and they should be color coded according to how much water need to provide. I don't have any fire hydrants.
So, so who, who would, who would be, would be TDEC that would inspect the, the fire hydrants? Is that, is that correct?
It would be TDEC that would approve the design of the water system.
Okay, would that, and forgive me for my lack of, lack of knowledge, as far as platting is concerned, when we're approving a plat for a subdivision, that's all taken into consideration, I would assume?
Well, in, in some instances, yes. In some instances, no. It's going to depend on the proximity of the subdivision to an existing supply. The Jasper Highlands subdivisions, was, again, it wasn't within the, the distance required for public water. Uh, so they were not obligated to put public water in. They often make that decision. So, that's why it's been a, a private system. There's a, Mr. Blasen, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but on the, the access road going up to the subdivision, there's a pump station there. That's where the public portion of the system ends. And then they buy water from the city's.
No, I remember, I remember the mayor that was installed at that time. They were trying to get that water up there. But again, you know, it's, for us to be approving a developer on wells seems to be problematic because they can get the plat process done really quickly with that. And then later on say, well, we want water.
State law simply dictates a minimum lot size. If the property is on wells and septic systems as opposed to public water or public system. There's a graduated scale on the lot size. If you have, if you have a, a septic tank and a well, then there's a minimal square footage for each lot. If you have public water and septic system, then the size can be a little small. If you have both, um, public water and public sewer, then that's the smallest lot size. But the county doesn't have the ability to change state law to the, to, to the ability to the well. The subdiver says, you know, we're gonna put wells in on these lots, and they're large enough to accommodate both the septic system and the well. The county doesn't have the ability to say, then we're not gonna approve.
But, yeah, just looking for actionable ideas. We learned a lot from the Cumberland at Swannie, I thought. But it seems like we're consistently rehashing the same problems over and over again. And that is one of the reasons why the Southeastern Development District, either their advice is problematic, or we're not listening to it. It's one or the other. And that's what I'm, because this issue is coming up now over and over again. I've been here almost twenty-two years. And we have another development that we have a problem with that you're aware of, where a woman has bought property, and now she's, she's, initially, she's told, yeah, you can build as long as you have access to your property. Three days later, the building inspector comes back to her and says, this is a civil matter, and you're on your own. And it just seems like the way we're treating these people i- is awful. And I think we've, we're better than this. Maybe that's wishful thinking.
Well, I, I think, too, Mr. Brandon, I understand there was an overlap in planning services provided to the county. I think when Cumberland and Swannie started, we were still with the state planning lines. And then transitioned over to the Southeastern Tennessee Development District later on. And I, I think that development may have, I think there may have already been a lawsuit over that. It was all done by the time it was switched over to the Development District. But the Development District was involved with the majority of the Jasper Highlands. And still today.
And another concern is these bonds amount that he's mentioning. Sure doesn't seem like we have enough money to build when a developer screws up or has a problem. Um, that their bond amounts, I, I didn't, I'm not saying I know what they should be. But it doesn't seem like there's adequate money there to build something from scratch so that we can make the folks that buy in their hole in the event the developer disappears or something happens.
I understand that there, there's a formula that's used to calculate that, that anticipates construction costs. And then the way the subdivision regulations are written, the bond amount has to be a hundred and fifty percent of whatever that number is.
And that, but if you go three, four years later down the road, isn't that possible?
Um, most letters of credit or bonds are written for, for a yearly.
How long?
For a year. A year?
Well, it could be written.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. That could be written.
The, the question I did not know about, well, uh, the water company, he sold the water system to Tennessee American Water.
No.
Okay.
The HOA sold it to.
Who sold it to?
The HOA, the owner.
The POA.
POA.
POA's didn't own it. Well, that goes to, that goes back to the roads.
One of them never owned the top.
In, in twenty seventeen, they deeded the roads. In, in twenty seventeen, they deeded the roads to the POA just so they don't have to pay the maintenance anymore. So, we got to pay for the maintenance, the roads that are getting beat up. But we won't go into that. I'm still back on, on the water here. Is how is he able to even put a water system in with state losses? He's not a utility. He can't do that. How was that not caused?
I can't answer that, man. I don't, I don't know how, you know, he, he did that.
Well, would it be unreasonable to say that, or make a conclusion that developers can do anything they want? Well, it sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Jackson and Marion County Commissioners. In two thousand nine, a storm flooded my yard. I went out and met Sheriff Burnett. He told me Tommy Stample developed Oak Palm subdivision, ran off from construction called Flooding for Mr. Hill, who shares a driveway to, with the sheriff. He said Mr. Hill threatened legal action, and as a result, Mr. Stample built a dam across, which is now my property. This dam protected Mr. Hill from flooding, but impounded water on my land. From this, I learned Sheriff Burnett is willing to prioritize the interest of his friends.
Mr. Kristoff, that, that, that water issue would be a city issue, not a county issue. So, let's, let's stay on topic, okay, Placer? Move on.
From this, I learned Sheriff Burnett is willing to prioritize the interest of his friends over fairness, even if it hurts an outsider like myself. Also, Sheriff Burnett's fence encroached three feet on my property.
Mr. Kristoff, that's a personal matter. That's, that's a personal civil matter. That's not a matter of the county. Proceed. Skip that and proceed, please.
Sheriff Burnett told me as we took down his fence, that I was, I was working on the Boss Hug bill, which would prevent speech traps in Tennessee. Sheriff Burnett dismissed the bill's importance, claiming it's always been that way, it's always going to be that way. I disagreed. On May fifth at six o'clock for no reason, I was arrested at my home by four law enforcement vehicles. Two of Sheriff Burnett's deputies, two cars of Jasper Police. I returned from riding my bicycle, hadn't eaten. The charges felony stalking, coercion of a witness, were based on false reports by Jasper Officer Dwayne Dykes. The warrants did not meet legal standards. Sheriff Burnett's deputies entered my home without a search warrant, frightening my wife as she's getting out of the shower. I was taken to Grandy County Jail, where I was told to strip naked, force the shower in front of a viewing window, placed in solitary confinement with minimal water, told I could not find out, as I paid five hundred dollars. Offered to pay my full five thousand dollar bond. I was told I could not. I refused to bow to extortion. I told the jailer I was fully disabled, senior citizen, spent the night without my CPAP medications, fearing I might fall asleep, stop breathing, die in my cell, with a jailer hung at tail over the window, so nobody could see if I fell unconscious. This incident showed me Sheriff Burnett is willing to serve bogus warrants. All the charges against me were dismissed by a grand jury. My record expen- expunged back to perfect. However, the experience cost me over eighty-five hundred dollars in legal fees and unjust treatment. Recently, I learned Sheriff Burnett assigned Marshall Rains to transport female inmates. I feel his poor judgment will sign a male employee to transport female inmates. Marshall Rains has been indicted, Marion, Smith, and Van Buren Counties for sexual conduct with female inmates during transport. Neighbors expressed concern about the possible abuse of inmates in Sheriff Burnett's jail, asking whether such abuses are being actively ignored, possibly due to Marshall Rains' family connections. I've witnessed Marion County grand jury indict Sheriff Burnett's chief deputy Gene Hardest on a ten-count charge related to forging signatures on sex offender registry forms. Cody Smith, former director of Marion County Drug Task Force, pled guilty to possession and intent to sell methamphetamine, received a ten-year sentence. Attorney General Courtney Lynch held a meeting, reporting that Cody Smith was stealing drugs, guns, money, from the evidence room, selling them on the street. Thomas Morgan warned us last month that Sheriff Burnett may be following the same practices that were legally questionable by Cody Smith. Sheriff Burnett's asset forfeiture practices of seizing assets based on suspicion alone, and reportedly pooling funds to compensate deputies, are practices that diminish accountability. Sheriff Burnett is currently lobbying for a five million dollar expansion to his jail. I prefer programs that help inmates reintegrate back into society. GED programs, job training, anger management, drug and alcohol treatment, finding Jesus in a home church. These services are available at no cost to Marion County taxpayers. But I've heard Sheriff Burnett refuses to allow inmates to be fully supported. I feel that Sheriff Burnett's jail dehumanizes those in custody and perpetuates the cycle of recidivism. Investigating, investing in rehabilitation may not only save our brothers and sisters in Jesus Christ, but for each person we rehabilitate, it saves taxpayer money. Marion County needs rehabilitation, leading to inmate salvation, to reduce government taxation. My neighbors say that Governor Lee should provide oversight for the alleged corruption in Marion County Sheriff's Department, and question Governor Lee's culpability by failing to protect Marion County citizens. Citizens tell me it's like an organized crime family operation that they call the Marion County Mafia. The sheriff's department, according to Denise Mason, has forty-seven vehicles. When you add the three requested tonight, gives fifty vehicles. Neighbors say Chief Deputy Gene Hardest was observed at Jefferson's Bar in Kimball drinking with a woman in an unmarked sheriff's deputy vehicle. Members asked how much personal use of county equipment occurs. A motor pool is much more cost-effective and has more integrity for the citizens than allowing up to fifty employees and Sheriff Burnett's ninety employee force to have a personal commuter car. Proverbs twenty-nine two teaches us, "When the righteous thrive, people rejoice; when the wicked rule, the people groan." This highlights the importance of righteous leadership for the well-being of our community. My neighbors asked if Sheriff Burnett is pulling a Joe Biden on Marion County. Does he know what's going on in his department costing taxpayers over four point three million dollars in two twenty twenty-four? If he does know what's going on, neighbors say that's even worse. Perhaps this would be a good time for Sheriff Burnett to allow Marion County to celebrate his accomplishments and pass the torch to a Christian leader that can carry Marion County through these hard times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Sheriff, would you like to respond to that, please?
I actually don't know where to start. I was smutted there. I couldn't take it all in. So, you're concerning the, the two officers out there in indictment. They're, they're pursuing innocence. They haven't been convicted before. And, uh, it sounded like he's already gotten convicted and sent to jail, but, uh, everybody has a assumption of innocence. As far as him being arrested by my officers, the warrant was sent down here by Mont Eagle. Uh, it was taken out by a Mont Eagle officer, and, uh, he was transported to Grandy County. Now, what happened to him in Grandy County and have a warrant was taken out? That's twenty-eight in Grandy County. I don't have anything to do with it. The only connection that, that my department has to him is that they were asked to execute the warrant. But he must have brought an accusation about the officer. The attorney general doesn't show that. They were nice to him. Policy is, you know, if you meet somebody and they go in the house to whatever, you got to follow them. If you don't know what they're going to get done. Deputy Grandy County got killed ten years ago because he didn't follow those regulations. He's still been alive. But he says he's been an officer for thirty-nine years. If he's been an officer for thirty-nine years, he knows that. So, as far as our problems outside the sheriff department, uh, you know, we are neighbors. My fence was a little bit over. He sent me a thing, and I, I removed my fence. Didn't have a problem with that. I, you know, I was a foot over his property. I didn't want my fence to be a foot over. So, a lot of other things about, uh, what he said, I don't know if y'all heard, so I'll just, uh, I think, I think people like, you know, if he wants to, uh, do such a good job running the sheriff, I always tell people, you know, they always say, sheriff, you need to do this, judge, you need to do that. My answer is, you know, you can do better. Don't be naming the hat and room for sheriff. I'll be glad to see you next, next month. That's all I got to add.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to speak on behalf of my father. I think this is about the second or third time Mr. Kristoff's got up here and made the accusations. Sheriff is correct. This is America. He presumed innocent until found guilty. Unlike Mr. Kristoff, my father's not been found guilty of anything. He's presumed innocent. He's pled not guilty. His case is going to go to trial. If the jury finds him guilty, so be it. If they find him not guilty, even better. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. General, I'm number twenty-eight, approved of the voters.
Beth Quatch, Erica Cullen, Stacy Nicole Holder, Amanda R. Palmerly, Jalanga Lynn Rogers, Deanna Spradlin, Kimberly DeWell, Angela Elwest, Amanda White.
Motion, Commissioner. Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner Brandt. All in favor? Oppose? General Business?
Chairman, I have one thing.
Yes, sir.
I left a letter for y'all this evening. Uh, this is on our City BG Food insecurity project. Uh, we had two bids on equipment, large equipment from, uh, Colorado Deco, sixty-nine thousand, two ninety-eight, sixty-three, small equipment, Wheeler material handling for thirty thousand, D sixty-six, four eight. These are the only bids we had. This, there's no county dollars involved in this, but this money has to go to, uh, my office, has to be put into our budget. And we will have to, uh, K O's this. I need y'all to approve these two bids as presented to both bids.
Motion, Commissioner Blansett, second. Commissioner Campbell, all in favor? Oppose? Motion to adjourn, by Commissioner Atkins, second, by Commissioner Campbell, needing adjourn.